Yes, sir. Jennifer? Calls meeting your order. The first thing we do is pledge allegiance to the United States of America and use a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting has been hosted in all the normal hosting places. And we are in the first item on the agenda. Tonight is a public hearing on the waiver requirements of the Justin statute. Statute 121.021 and F. An administrative rule statute 121.021 and F. An administrative rule provided by the Department of Instruction regarding a waiver required instructional hours for students for the 2019-2020 school year only due to COVID public health emergencies. Sure, we can start that.
So, well, thanks everybody for coming. Tonight's open meeting and basically our public hearing focuses around basically as of March 12th was our last day of school. Formal schooling for what we would say face-to-face instruction due to the COVID pandemic. The Department of Public Instruction as well as our legal team is recommending that we formally waive the instructional minutes that occurred during that time. And we feel we did what we could with virtual. Obviously, we did the best we could given the time that we had. But the Department of Public Instruction is asking or is having it up as an option for the school boards to waive the requirement of the X amount of hours that are required for students in grades five K through sixth grade and then seventh and eighth grade for our school district. This also does a couple of things. We did reach out to our families with IEDs and tried to accommodate as best as we could. Some families waived that right. I waived that instruction while others decided to take it. But we did the very best we could with these minutes. By waiving the instructional minutes, basically it puts us back to our expectations that happened pre-COVID and that we didn't meet those requirements based on the days and things like that too as well. So it's a formality, just looking for the board to approve the resolution to waive the instructional minutes just for the 1920 school year. Do we have to formally read? Nope, you can just, the next step would be to say if there's any public hearing on that and then ultimately the resolution or the approval. Just a motion to approve the resolution to request a waiver of instructional hour requirement in 1920 school year. And then we already got that resolution for the board ready to sign if this is the little bit more.
Okay, so we'll do a hearing before we do the board action. Correct, correct. Okay, is there anyone that would like to address the board dealing with waiver minutes that are required? As a hearing, no one. I am asking the board to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the waiver instructional hours requirement for the 1920 school year. That's just 118.31B. With the modification that it says, the board of amendments, and then number two, it says the board of amendments here by direct to superintendent or heard that could need. That should be his that he
I see that filled.
Okay, we'll fix that.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion by the board? All in favor, say aye.
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 All the same time, motions carried. We are on to approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
All the same time, motions carried. Okay, we've got the minutes from Monday, May 18th. And then Monday, June 22nd. Motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, May 18th, 2020, at 6:00 PM, open session. And Monday, June 22nd, 2020, at 5:00 PM, open and closed session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing done. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All the same time, motions carried. We're on to the approval of the financial report and bill listing.
All right, I guess that one's done. We did that. Uh, make a motion to approve the voucher listing. General front payroll. Direct deposit 900051895 through 9000 51995, the amount of $149,912.92. Direct deposit 900051996 through 500052095, the amount of $139,188.43. Direct deposit 900052096 through 90005220, the amount of $149,754.31. Wire transfers for payroll liabilities, wire number 201900287 through 201900322, the amount of $414,975.99, total payroll of $853,831.65. Accounts payable, check number 54235 through 54313, the amount of $263,939.20. AP wire transfer 201900296 through 201900327, the amount of $1,537.19. Current transaction 052020, in the amount of $35,849.78. APH direct deposit, number 192000178 through 19200195, the amount of $1,310.83. Total accounts payable of $202,637. Total disbursement of $1,156,468.65.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Okay, no question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same time, motions carried. We're on to delegations to be heard. I have no one except for one question mark. Jennifer, you?
No.
No?
You're good.
You're good. Okay. Did you get anything? Anything? I did not. Okay. And we are on to the administrative report. We've got, so donation.
Yep, so we have a couple of donations this month. Thank you to the Paper Master family for donating a digital piano to the intermediate school band program. Really appreciate that. And also for some earlier agreements, our PTO generously donated $18,231 for our new primary indoor play equipment. What that is, is it's been a joint venture with the PTO and our staff to create an indoor play area, new first grade large group area. So that's in the works and should be ready to go. Hopefully, we can use it from September. So and also thank you very much to the PTO for their continued support all year and generous donations. So we really, really appreciate it.
We need a motion to accept the donations.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation of the digital piano and the PTO duration of $18,231.71 for the primary indoor play equipment.
I'll second.
We got a second by Lindy? All in favor, then signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, all the same time, motions carried. We're on to personnel actions.
And then for letters of resignation, again, I'd like to thank Lindsay Johnson for her nine-plus years of experience. Michael Werny for his four years of experience. Amanda Bente for her five years of experience. As well as Sherri McGregor for three years. Three years, Sherri, too. So the letters of resignation are attached to your board packet. We wish them the best as well moving forward in their next career adventures. Also, the administration has filled all of our open teacher positions. As you can see, we are recommending Heather Earl into our special education program. Heather is coming to us with 10 years of special ed experience. Natalie Denbauer is coming to us with seven years of first grade experience. Ashley Bartlett is coming to us with three years of first grade experience. Emily Panaro, same then, three years of experience in first grade. Jennifer Schwingel, required, coming to us with 21 years of experience, most recently from the Homestead High School's choral director. We have Justin Dusso, who has five years of experience in Cudahy, who will be teaching PE and health at the MND school. And I did email out a late hire over the weekend, the email message you have in front of the there is Olivia Creepin-Drum as our primary art teacher part-time too as well. So a big thank you to all of our teachers who participated and staff for hiring on these hiring committees. They were all done for the past several weeks when school was out and we gave up our personal funds. So a big big thank you to our staff. And you were part of those two times. We really appreciate that. So ultimately, the administration is recommending the board make a motion to approve the letters of resignation for Lindsay Johnson, Michael Werny, Amanda Bente, Sherri McGregor. And then after that, administration is recommending the board make a motion to approve the individual teaching contracts for Heather Earl, Natalie Denbauer, Ashley Bartlett, Emily Panaro, Jennifer Schwingel, Justin Dusso, and Olivia Creepin-Drum.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Lindsay Johnson, Michael Werny, Amanda Bente, and Sherri McGregor.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same time. Motions carried. Just under motion for the hires.
I'll make a motion to offer individual contracts to Heather Earl, Natalie Denbauer, Ashley Bartlett, and Emily Panaro, Jennifer Schwingel, Justin Dusso, and Olivia Creepin-Drum.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to bring discussion. All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
All the same time. Motions carried. We're on to information from the district administrator.
Sure, wanted to just kind of update the community on our process towards our possible intermediate school remodel, which is hopefully going to happen possibly as soon as next school year, possibly next spring. Ultimately, as we know, we've been working with EUA in moving forward with the design team from the district. There are 16 team members of the district from various roles and responsibilities. And that is what we call our visionary team. And we also have of that 16, a core of eight, who we call a core team, who has been working weekly with EUA on, you know, tweaks and design changes and things like that. Things are continuing to progress. We've got a really diverse team who continues to push, I think, I do really push the EUA as well as Myron as the cost estimators to really make sure that we produce a project or proposed project to the entire board that represents what it is that we're trying to do in the RFP. As we take a look at not only the 75 section, but we've also expanded our scope basically to the entire building. As because if you move something from, you know, the five, six, or the seven, eight wing down to here, you may have to do some things over in, you know, the other side of the building. Have you think about replacing that or relocating to a different program as we go there too as well? One of the questions I get quite a bit is, is not how are you paying for this? And how is the district going to be paying for this? The district over the past nine years, went on 10 years, has been saving not only through fund balance, but through Fund 41 and Fund 46. Those funds are facility-only funds that the district has been setting aside, some at annual fees and some through their annual budget to support a large-scale program, a large-scale project like this. And those dollars, Fund 41 and Fund 46, can only be used for facility improvements. They are earmarked for that. They cannot be used for anything other than bricks, mortar, facility, technology, things like that. Like those, the infrastructure can't be used on salaries, benefits, instructional programming at all. Obviously, we use those facility drive dollars to drive instructional programming as we're looking at bringing in, in the spread area, we're looking at bringing in three maker areas, a design area, clean maker area, the dirty maker area. The dirty maker area comes with manufacturing, woods, plastics, metals. So we're really excited to be able to bring some of that opportunity here too as well. So with this too also comes a remodel of the kitchen, I'm sorry, kitchen and our commons area, but also our front office area too as well. So lots of things being discussed, really talking about, you know, it's really a curiosity center, really trying to drive one of the likes of our mission statement that we're really excited to continue working towards it too as well. With the scope of the project, and right now, we are hoping to bring something to the board, the full board to consider and watch is our new deadline. So we've, we just wanted to keep the conversation going. We're still thinking the design and really talking about what the priorities are. And so we've got some, we're going to push the project from a July type of approval, bring something to the board, July, August. EUA still feels that with the construction cycle, you can push off a month. They feel very confident that we'll still be able to beat our timelines to begin construction in the early spring of next school year, get back to the road. As well, the scope of the project that we're considering right now is right around, trying to, that $2 million. Trying to really focus on that $2 million. So I guess, Phil, anything to add? You're part of that core team.
No, that was good stuff. Yeah, we made a lot of progress in EUA evaluating the options and, you know, working through priorities. And we just need to take a little bit of a step back to make sure that we as the core team or as the Martin community as a whole, you know, are all in line. And we're giving a very clear direction on what we want to move forward with.
Exciting stuff, that's for sure. So that's all I have for information.
Then we are on to new business.
Sure, sure. As everybody's very aware, the Department of Public Instruction released their guidelines towards schools possibly to consider, things to consider with school reopening. Ranging from obviously instruction to health screenings, to classroom environments, to transportation, a little bit about food service in there, cleanings. And we continue, and I say we, our leadership team, but the collective, we also include other Waukesha County Health and Human Service Department, Waukesha County Executive, Department of Public Instruction. Also, we, all sorts of people are continuing the conversation weekly, daily, as we move forward with creating possible reentry plans for this upcoming fall. As you heard, many school districts are saying they were preparing for three main options. Those three options are very clear to everybody, which is a 100% reopen. There is a kind of a 50% reopen because the EPI is recommending right around that 14, 15 students per class. We know that Waukesha County and other local municipalities may say there's no more mask gatherings in 10. So we're kind of planning twofold on either 10 or 15, whatever the county may or the state. And then ultimately, we also have to be prepared for a full-fledged virtual option. That's when the state, like they did in March, comes in and says, hey, we are going to shut you guys down for a period of X amount of days, maybe two weeks. You know, kind of that 14-day period seems to be kind of the general time. And we need to be ready with clear expectations for our staff, clear expectations for our kids, clear expectations for our families, because they want to know what's expected of each one of those scenarios. The one thing we do know for sure, and everybody's not in shock, is the school will look different when we reopen in the fall. Whether that's full-blown 100% or a blended environment where it's 50/50, a partial virtual, partial in-person. We will continue to work towards those plans. I've been known last week, and Waukesha County is really hoping for a 100% reentry for those students who wish to and families who wish to come back. We will continue to, as we develop these plans, we'll be able to survey our families. We did not want to survey too early as we know that the world continues to change, people's opinions continue to change about this. So we are going to put out more details and ask really specific questions for some of the scenarios that we are hearing may occur. All the way from you support everyone wearing masks, temperature checks, to all of these things that we continue to really plan for and get guidance from, you know, the Department of Public Instruction, but most importantly, they have directed us to Waukesha County Health and Human Services. That is where our contact is. In addition to that, we continue to collaborate with other Waukesha County schools, the Arrowhead School System as well. As we want to work together to create an environment that is very, I want to say identical, but similar. What are those frameworks that are going to be similar? And we know the edges are going to be different based on our school facilities. And that's really what people need to understand is we do have facility limitations with some of this. But we're going to continue to develop plans A, B, C, and D as many as we need to, to make sure that we're ready for, hopefully, anything that comes to us as well. As we move forward, we will be presenting a plan to the board in late July, early August. And that plan will focus around all the way from transportation to food service to passing periods of recess. All the things, the classroom environments, what's your instruction? How is our class list going to be created? What kind of cohorts or isolation are you going to do to try to minimize contact within students, different students, different bodies? What are the quarantine procedures? So all of these things that we are going to have to relay in a very clear message. A lot of these things, every school is battling with, right? All the way from what the health screens are to what some of those frequently asked questions are. So that's why we continue to, when we roll up documents, don't be surprised if you see locals from 24 different school districts or the Waukesha County, because we are really working hand-in-hand with all of the organizations to be able to start to plan and move forward with a very positive. The motto is be safe to reopen, right? We know that we're going to be asking our staff to do different things. We're going to be asking our families to communicate with their kids. We're going to be asking our kids to do some different things. That is all in the hope that we can stay open as long as possible, as long as possible. So we want to mitigate, mitigate the risk and we want to just really help. Obviously, if there is a spread, control that spread, track it, and really communicate with Waukesha County and families about what the next steps are. So today I got four questions about what happens if there's a case of COVID. Does everybody have to quarantine? We are still being told what that is. That is not going to be a local decision, from what I understand. The American Community School District isn't going to make the determination about what happens if COVID shows up. We will be guided by the Health Service Department, for sure. So there are certain things that we're not going to be in control of as we move forward. But, and then we will have local decisions to be made in some cases, and I'll continue to identify that to the board. But we will have a plan ready to be rolled out to the board. And before that, we'll be having surveys out to our community to see what their threshold is for that risk tolerance, basically, as we move forward. So again, we're going hand-in-hand with as many people as we can, that nurses association, the healthcare providers, we're getting all sorts of people involved. Making these determinations.
So Ron, if, if stuff does, if we don't have mandates from this stage, right, like we did back in March where we were, you know, told to shut down? And this is left to, you know, kind of the local decision, right? That's the way this, everything is going if stuff doesn't continue to get much, much worse. Is that local decision is a weird situation, right? Because this is not the sort of thing that normally would have to be decided, right? Normally, we just go to school at the beginning of the fall. And there was no decisions we made about if we do that or that. So is that decision of the direction we take, you know, do we do all five days at school? Do we do, you know, four days in cleaning or like whatever? Is that a superintendent decision? Is that a board-level decision? Like, who's ultimately going to make that call?
Sure.
They're not being told what to do.
Sure, that's why the plan will be presented to the school board. The school board will be making the final decision about what moves forward. Now, if your decision is give it to me, that's, that's up to you guys. But I'm going to be presenting a plan proposal with multiple scenarios that says, if this happens, this is going to be the plan. I kind of give you the example, Phil, of, you know, there's a lot of options, even the EPI report, the 90 page report about what are your blended learning options? So if you are mandated to go to a cohort model where you can only educate 50% of your kids on campus, we have multiple day, you can do A, B day, right? You can go every other day. What's, what's best for families? You know, do you go three on and two off? Do you go two on, a virtual day, and then? So there's a lot of different scenarios that we will be asking our families for, because ultimately, this will be disruptive towards their, their professional and personal environments too as well. But Phil, I'm going to hand it to you guys and give you the best advice and our recommendation is going to be created by a team of educators and local. Again, nobody's an expert in this, except for just getting all sorts of recommendations. Because somebody said today, it's like, oh, Ron, you're the expert. What do you think? I said, I am not an expert. No one is. But, but either way, we are, and one thing I, what I think I forgot to mention is, is for families who feel that staying home is in the best, is in the best interest for their child, their family, for whatever reason, we will be offering a virtual option, 100% virtual option. We will identify and highlight what that is as well too. So again, we want to make sure that we can accommodate as many people as possible, if not all, through this process too as well.
And then at what point do we start engaging the staff, like teaching staff specifically, I guess, in terms of trying to figure out what, you know, how those plans are going to work, regardless of what the, you know, scenario is, right? There's, there's five or six or potentially scenarios that, that we're looking at or evaluating. Is it the superintendent and administration or do you guys know what kind of that for months now?
So we will be breaking
Is that all happening?
That, that will all be happening through some surveying as well. Again, I've already had three conversations with folks and, and what we're asking, for instance, I had a conversation with a FIAE teacher. I'm like, hey, Ron, are you following what the state FIAE association was saying? I'm like, no, I'm not. Are you? And she's like, yeah. I'm like, great. Because we're going to need that as well. But no, we'll be getting to break that into the poll from the educational finance standpoint in mid-July. Prior to, obviously, we'll have surveying for them too. We've already started that a little bit from a work environment about what it would take for, what happens if we do a virtual, what happens if we do go blended? What kind of family reasons or family situations do we need to be concerned about or considerate of when, when possibly thinking about coming back in the fall too? But the educational environment standpoint will be one of those where once we kind of dictate or identify, okay, hey, what's the facility going to hold? Then we'll have to talk to them about the instructional approaches that we may or may not have to adjust with or what their thoughts are on that. Because we may be asking some people to do some different things than what they've done. Particularly, we're most concerned about our intermediate school, right? Because that's where typically we've done most of the changing of classes and stuff like that. So what does that look like? Ultimately, we'll have to engage staff, particularly at the intermediate school, about what that may or may not be.
Any other questions?
Any other questions on, uh, something that followed? And then we're on to the final review, the approval of the twenty-twenty-one employee handbook. So, last month, uh, we presented some handbook changes. And, uh, unfortunately, due to some of the craziness and scheduling, um, our policy team did not get together this month, but will be in July. Um, there was one more, it was a policy review by our attorney, uh, to take a look at and make sure we're all up to date, not only with current standards and laws, uh, but ultimately, to what we needed to do to make some changes in dealing with this pandemic. Because there's some, some human resource things that we need to identify, to, uh, put into our employee handbook. We will be reviewing that with the policy team. Again, this is all just legal stuff that, uh, they are recommending us consider moving forward, too. So, uh, but this is the main adjustments and changes that we discussed. The policy team did meet and review it. And this will be the second reading of the, uh, of the employee handbook. So, if there is, uh, no further questions, just looking for a, uh, recommendation from the board to approve the twenty-twenty-twenty-one employee handbook as presented. Knowing that we can change that if we, if we, if we, if we be working against the reason why, it will be July and August, be ready for September, when we roll out.
Hey, Dean, just FYI, this has had to do with substitute teacher compensation, so I'm going to abstain from pulling on this.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion to uh, approve the twenty-twenty-one employee handbook as presented.
We have a second by Lindsay. Any further discussion? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion is carried. Okay, we've got the next item, C, approve the twenty-twenty-one teacher contracts. Um, it's that time of year when, uh, the, the contracts that were not, not renewed, uh, get forwarded to the board for approval. Um, this is kind of just a formality, as these contracts do have to be reviewed, uh, the full-time ones due, due to state statute and things like that. So, um, the administration recommends the board approve the twenty-twenty-twenty-one teacher contracts as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-twenty-one teacher contract as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? And all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion's carry. Okay, we're on to the final reading of the district approved administrative contract. Yeah, do that. Yeah, same thing. Uh, we had some contracts that expired, um, and first state statute didn't get the role. So, uh, the district administrator is recommending the board approve the administrative contracts with Jay Postick, John Menashine, and Laurie Lusham.
I'll make a motion to approve the administrative contract for Jay Postick, John Menashine, and Laurie Lusham.
I'll second.
Uh, we have a second by Lindsay. Um, is there any more discussion? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same side. Motion's carry. Okay, now we're on to the final reading of the district social and emotional learning curriculum. Um, again, uh, big team of, uh, of the district employees, we're really, really hard at this. This is our last review and our last, uh, look at the social emotional student curriculum, uh, for us to implement next school year. So, the so, the, uh, SEL team is, the student achievement committee is recommending the board approve the SEL student curriculum as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the SEL curriculum as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? And all in favor, say aye by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion's carry. Okay, we are on to the twenty-twenty-one open enrollment applications. Um, every year, typically, the EPIs push off the deadline, uh, push forward the deadline for boards to make approvals for open enrollment, uh, to the end of June. So, typically, it is around the end of May. But, uh, so what you have in the board packet is the seat, number of seats that were, uh, granted in, uh, January. And you also see the number of applicants. We only had one grade level where it reached over a number of applicants, and that was second grade. And, uh, all of these students have siblings who have applied. So, through our open enrollment policies, I, we denied them. They would be kicked right back in through our policy. So, um, we will see that, uh, the recommendation is to approve all the students in open enrollment applications not incoming, not incoming with an expulsion order, i.e. not covering speech services. So, again, the board did say for special education, uh, we were full for cross-guided work, we were open for speech, however. And then ultimately, in the expulsion order, uh, we can help cover any disciplinary action that occurred in the previous district to ensure that we would not, uh, be, uh, having anybody during expulsion orders without, uh, greater understanding about what happened. Um, well, at the same time, so there's two motions that have to happen. One is, is we have to accept all of the open enrollment applications not incoming with an expulsion order. But the other piece is, is we have to approve, uh, all the students who have applied out. Um, it's required by state statute. We can't stop them, but, uh, it's just a formality, uh, of the board. So, this year, we had twenty-four students, sixteen families. Um, and, uh, the, most of these students did not attend. We have three students apply who are currently in our district. Three students apply out to another public school. Uh, two of the three applied to all virtual schools. So, uh, there are things we will be reaching out to all of these applicants, people who applied out, uh, showcasing the district a little bit, make a personal communication, and, uh, just inviting them to come over and learn more about our school district. So, uh, the other students are students who have moved into the district and are currently attending their school that they moved from. So, not accounted. So, again, just, uh, looking for two of those motions to accept, uh, the applicants in, as well as the applicants out.
I'll make a motion to approve all open enrollment applications not incoming with an expulsion order or an IDP not covering speech services.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, then say aye.
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 All the same side. Motion's carry.
I make a motion to approve all students who have applied out of the Waukesha Community School District.
We have a second by Lindsay. Any discussion? All in favor, then say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All the same side. Motion's carry. Okay, we are on to G, which is district obligation to intentionally encourage social justice. It's a discussion. So, Phil, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, uh, so we had a lot, January.